Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Tuesday evening, January 2nd. I now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Nash?
Here. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will ask our city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council due to just cause or emergency circumstances.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have no requests.
Thank you very much. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin this special meeting with our first item, which will be a closed session items on conference with labor negotiators. Conference code section 54957.6. Before we move into closed session, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no in-person comments, and there are no Zoom attendees with hands raised.
All right, then. Why don't we move? And we will...
Question before we go. Just tell me I have no internet. Which one should I get online?
Help you with that before you go into closed session. Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. We will now move to the second item of the agenda, which will be charter amendments and council compensation. And I believe we will be hearing from our city attorney now. Thank you.
Yes, you will. Okay, so I have a fairly short presentation, which is very sensitive, and then happy to take questions, and then we can turn it over to public comment before returning to the council. So these are the questions that are embedded in the staff report. Does the council agree with the proposed language and recommendations addressing mayoral rotation, board and commission compensation qualifications, and other changes? Then the next question is, separate and apart from charter amendments, what's the council wish to do when it comes to council compensation? Currently, under the charter, you're paid 600 a month, and that can be adjusted based on a change to state law. So this is the language that was previously proposed, and the idea here was to prevent a continuance of the selection of the mayor. And the new language is in bold, of course. So what I've added in the staff report is some new proposed language that's really taken from the council guidelines. And the first sentence is intended to make it essentially a ministerial process of selecting the mayor. Whoever's up next, the council shall pick them to be mayor, and then the second person shall be picked as deputy mayor. But there's an out. The reason why I included this in the charter language is that I felt if you're going to include a requirement to pick somebody, then the exception to that requirement also made sense to be included in the same location, that is, the charter. Now, I was trying to avoid having the charter language be too wordy, but this felt appropriate to be included in the charter itself. And then the last portion is simply that the details, further details, can be specified by ordinance. And that would be things such as when a new council member comes on board, you know, what happens when the mayor finishes serving, you know, where do they go in the line, those sorts of details, you don't need to specify in the charter. The charter can say, an ordinance can specify how it will work mechanically. This is pretty straightforward. It's in the same charter section, based on the council feedback from last time. Right now, interestingly, the charter specifies the earliest possible time for a council meeting, and you can certainly say it's a time specified by ordinance and then enact an ordinance. I imagine that a council start time, this would be for a regular meeting, by the way, not a special meeting, since here we are, special meeting starting at 5:30. I imagine for a regular meeting, it would be no earlier than, say, 6 o'clock, although that would ultimately be up to the council. Okay, and then filling council vacancies, so that the language here is no different from what was in the previous staff report from October, but I thought I would include it again because depending on where the council lands in terms of the mayoral rotation, that could affect how you view filling a vacancy. Because if choosing a mayor becomes essentially a mechanical ministerial type process, then perhaps the power of the mayor to fill a vacancy becomes less, it's still significant, but there's really no wiggle room. You have to pick somebody who's next in line unless they decide not to do so. So I think there was clear council consensus for the 60 days at the last council meeting, and I counted the council majority for the special election language to replace the current power of the mayor to fill a vacancy. But if the council wants to revisit this language, you're free to do so. Okay, so board and commission qualifications and compensation. So as indicated on the slide, this is the current language. At the time of appointment, board and commission members have to have the same qualifications as council members. So what does that mean? That means that board and commission members have to be electors, and they have to be citizen, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the city. Very common requirement. Again, this is current charter language. Members of boards and commissions are not paid, but they can receive reimbursement for their actual unnecessary expenses that they incur when they're performing their duties. So this isn't going to come up really for board and commissioners, but expenses are traditionally things like, you know, maybe travel expenses, or, you know, meals or lodging, that kind of thing, that are directly related to the performance of their duties. Again, that doesn't come up if you're, say, a member of the planning commission, you're traveling across town, but still, that's a typical kind of reimbursement. And if the council wanted to change the reimbursement policy, you know, that would be the subject of a council action, not a charter amendment. You know, I'm going to go back one slide, so, because I think one of the main subjects for tonight's meeting is board and commission compensation. So there's a chart in the staff report that addresses compensation for board and commission members, and what I found is I've really focused on San Mateo County, in that, for the most part, cities do not compensate their board and commission members. Now, referring back to the staff report prepared by the clerk's office in July, that there are certainly are cities around the state that do provide compensation, really more in the form of a stipend, like a small stipend, to board and commission members. So it's fairly uncommon in San Mateo County, but there are cities around the state that do this. There are some complicating factors, I'll call it, as I mentioned in the staff report, that, you know, right now, board and commission members are being unpaid, they're not treated as city employees, for example, unlike members of the city council. Now, that is, I'm not trying to, I'm not saying that if you provide a small nominal stipend to board and commission members, that'll somehow transform those board and commissioners members into employees. Not saying that. This is also what I said at the last meeting, I think in October, or perhaps also in July, too. But the greater the compensation you provide, then it gets a little bit more of into a gray area, I think, where there could be an argument that they are treated as employees or, or and/or, that they could try and argue that they're covered by workers' comp, because under state law, workers' compensation applies to the folks here, the city employees, elected officials, and paid public officers. So I can't speak to exactly how all these other cities have navigated that issue. I'm merely flagging it as an issue where that is a potential concern. So that's one issue. The other issue is just a kind of an administrative question, that is, right now, I believe, the city provides issues W-2s to all the council members, and so if there is a compensation provided to board and commission members, that might become necessary. Not saying it necessarily will, but it's a possibility. I'll put aside the minimum wage question for the moment, and then focus on if the council were to choose to both change the eligibility requirements and compensation, then it could lead to situations where the city could be faced with somebody who's on a board or commission who may not be eligible to work in the U.S. You know, they may have a visa that, maybe they're on a student visa, maybe they can't work. So then, we just have to be very careful about providing, we can't pay them like a salary because they're not eligible to work. And I'm aware of like the state law that was passed several years ago that where members of California, state of California, boards and commissions, you know, they tried to frame it in a bill passed in, I think, 2019, where they said, okay, regardless of your immigration status, you know, you can be appointed to board and commissions, and we'll make sure that any compensation doesn't, essentially it doesn't violate federal law. It's a bit of, it's just something to navigate. It's a potential concern. I'm not saying it's impossible, but there are multiple factors to consider. So which is why I suggested in the staff report, if the council were to focus on eligibility for board and commission members instead of compensation, that raises fewer legal issues because you can broaden your applicant pool, and this is where the policy considerations come into play, right? I mean, you can broaden your applicant pool to folks who are not just those who are U.S. citizens and residents of the city. You could potentially look at people who are here but aren't residents of the city but aren't U.S. citizens, or people who live in areas adjacent to San Mateo, unincorporated San Mateo, I'll call it. That's another potential applicant pool. Also, we previously discussed youth commissioners, where under the current charter language, they cannot be formal commissioners with full voting rights, because you have to be an elector, you have to be a U.S. citizen, 18 years of age or older. So under 18, you can't qualify. So if you change the eligibility requirements, that's also something you could look at, and if you were to do that, then you would probably want to have a minimum age for service. So my point is that it opens up some possibilities without running across quite as many legal issues. And, you know, for youth commissioners, I mentioned the staff report, there's probably some limiting factors, for example, the personnel board, that may not be something you would appoint youth commissioners for. I mean, the planning commission, that would be up to the city council, but there are some considerations that the council could look at when changing eligibility requirements. Okay, now I will move on to the next slide, but there's a lot to cover there. Okay, so council compensation, so this is the current language. It allows the city to adjust compensation as authorized by state law. So state law changed as of yesterday. Council, general law cities can alter their compensation, and there's revised amounts depending on the size of the city. So this is a list of cities that's from the staff report. The new column is when, I believe, it was last adjusted. It actually was pretty straightforward to do because it's all done by ordinance, so it's just a matter of looking at a series of municipal codes. There was a correction I had for Half Moon Bay, I think it's actually 955, at least that's based on the municipal code. And then for Daly City, I know it looks like a high dollar amount, but in their municipal code, they created their compensation in the 80s, and then they adjusted it several times over the years. That may be how they got to their dollar amount. That makes sense. Oh, by the way, that also, the chart here, that included Belmont, which is not in the staff report, and Belmont just changed their, as general law city, they just changed their compensation, just a matter of months ago. Okay, and then also for the remaining cities, most of the remaining cities in San Mateo County, you could see some have no compensation, some have adjusted their compensation recently. It's really across the board. But regardless, I think if the council wanted to make an adjustment, it would do, it would do by ordinance. Okay, so we're back to the original slide. Does the council agree with the proposed language and recommendations? And there's the council compensation question. And so I'll leave it at that. Open for questions.
Thank you very much. I know this has been a lot of work back and forth. Greatly appreciated. So let me open it up for council questions from my fellow council members. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes, I probably would be leaning toward allowing people that are DACA-era folks to serve on commissions. Question about the compensation. I was really recently relating this to Alex, when I was on the Board of Barber and Cosmetology, became aware that young people that we trained here in the community colleges to do barber and cosmetology work could not take their tests because they didn't have a social security number. So I moved through the Board of Cosmetology and got the agreement of the board members, took it to John Perez, who's the Speaker of the Assembly, and Ricardo Laura carried the bill that set up an ITN number, which is nine digits, like the social security number, so that undocumented people could get their licenses to work. And so we could do something like that here, and you could pay commissioners, not something like 100 or 50, you know, whatever we choose, 100, $50 a meeting, and then they would be like private contractors, not employees. That would be one of my questions for you. Do you think as an attorney, thinking through that, something we recently did with the state that we could do here?
So I know the way, the way that the state of California viewed it, as they crafted their bill so that regardless of immigration status, a small stipend could be provided to board and commission members. That applies to general law cities as opposed to charter cities. I think there's, I would have to look into whether the kind of number you're referring to, I mean, regardless of this ITN number, the question is, if somebody's not eligible to work in the U.S., can you, can you pay them under federal law? So I think there's, there's still a potential concern there with compensating people who are not eligible to work. But if there's a, well, you know what, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that, because I'm not familiar with the board that you mentioned and the process that they undertook.
It opened up licenses for eight million people in the state of California. So it was not a small thing.
Oh, I understand the significance of it. It's just that ultimately, as an employer, you know, we need to follow federal law when it comes to compensating people, so I would still have some concerns about that.
Do you have to do an I-9 for somebody who's an independent contractor?
Well, there wouldn't be independent contractors. I mean, they're volunteers as board and commission members, but then when you start compensating them, it's not only the payment question that arises, then depending on the compensation, it's also the employment question.
Could be a meal or a gas allowance, something like that?
Well, I mean, I think a reimbursement for expenses, that's already allowed for board and commission members. It's a complicated question because there's different factors, so that's why it's hard to give a... So that's why it's hard to give a straightforward answer to a complex question.
Okay, I understand. That solves that. I'll wait to comment on any other things I have questions on those. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, excuse me, Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. Prasanna, thank you for your presentation. In some of your discussion through the presentation, I got a sense that there might be, that there might be a threshold related to board and commissioner compensation, you know, beyond which, as you were noting, there may be concerns with considering them as employees. And I just wondered if you had an idea of, you know, perhaps an amount lower than what was brought up in the last discussion that would alleviate those concerns?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I wish I had a threshold or a bright line, but I don't think there is necessarily a bright line. I mean, again, right now, the council has compensated $600 a month. You know, the council members are treated as employees. Now, does that mean a payment of, say, $150 or $50 sort of avoids that concern? I mean, there's, there's, again, there's different issues. There's the employment question. Then there's also the workers' comp question because for workers' comp, it's, you know, it covers paid elected officials and public officers. So, you know, it's designed to cover employees and then some. So I don't have a threshold for you. I wish I did. I mean, previously at the last, at the last meeting, I indicated that if you had a stipend of a relatively low dollar amount, that probably would not transform board and commission members into employees if it was a nominal payment intended to be a sort of reimbursement for expenses. But I can't tell you if this is the point at which somebody becomes an employee. Because at the end of the day, like, somebody who's working for an organization, individual entity for a salary or wage, that's really what an employee is. And it also, under IRS rules, you look at things like can the employer dictate the way in which an individual is supposed to accomplish a task? You know, that's one of the hallmark of sort of distinction between like a contractor and an employee. So that is all, suffice it to say that some cities, I think, take the position that a very low stipend, maybe like a $50 stipend, you know, really shouldn't result in a member of a board of commission becoming an employee. They may even say that. Ultimately, you know, it's more of a legislative intent. I think it's probably at that threshold, a pretty good argument. But the closer the higher you get, then it becomes something that's a bit of a gray area where one might try and argue that they're really employees.
So maybe just to put a finer point on it, I guess, is there not, is there not an amount that, you know, would have you feeling as though we could go ahead without the concerns you have?
I mean, the last time I mentioned that, you know, we talked about like an amount of pay, say, a hundred dollar stipend, or I think the $150 stipend, you know, was mentioned before.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I think there's, there's an argument that that would not transform, like a board of commissioner, like into an employee. But then there's also the workers, the workers' comp issue where if somebody is paid, then there, the statute, you know, applies the workers' comp system to elected officials and paid public officers. So does that mean if you provide a large stipend, that that individual then becomes subject to workers' comp? I mean, looking at the cases, like, I think the answer wasn't really clear to me. But to answer your question, to try and put a finer point on it, I mean, I think even like an amount of, say, $150 a month, you know, you're running a risk. I think you're, even at that point, you're running a risk about workers' comp potentially applying.
Thank you. And so in the work that's been done to date by staff on this topic, given as you, as you mentioned, that back in July, we did have a sampling of cities outside of the county that currently gives compensation to board members and commissioners. Do we have a sense of how those cities decided to address this issue, which they surely had to address?
I think some cities, so, no, to answer your question, I was really focusing more on San Mateo County cities. I mean, certainly if the council directs and says, go do more research, you know, that's fine. But I think cities are, take a variety of approaches and both as to the compensation amount, you know, how they treat them, whether they just choose to treat them as employees, whether they choose to extend workers' comp coverage to them. I think, I don't, my, my understanding is there's not a uniform practice, is my belief. But I can certainly firm that up with additional research if the council directs me to do so.
Thank you. I had, let's see. We got a note, council received a note from CMO Patel, who gave a public comment earlier and had a proposal of a slight change to language related to, I think, the, maybe the, either mayoral or vacating, related to changing, the, yeah, I think it's, let me see if I can find the language in the R packet. This, I think it would be the mayoral rotation language because it relates to what happens during the, the meeting in which we select the mayor. I think it was a small tweak and let me, I guess, if I can't immediately find it here, then I may need to defer the question.
On this slide, excuse me, on the, on the slide, I think is the relevant language.
Let's see. Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I guess the question was, do you have concerns with the proposal? Do you think it could be included?
I just don't think it's necessary because the first sentence on the slide indicates at the first regular council meeting in December, following a general municipal election, canvass and canvassing the returns, essentially, you know, certifying the election. That, you know, that's what takes place. And then the very next sentence is the new members, meaning newly elected members. I mean, those are the ones who, I think you have to read it in context. It's those who are new members by virtue of the election are then inducted into office. So it's just, it's just unnecessary language, I think.
Thank you. My last question is about council compensation and I think I just wanted to confirm that even if council were interested in considering a, an increase in compensation close to the maximum amount now allowable under state law, would there be a significant impact to the city's finances as a result?
I can go ahead and answer that question. Good evening, CMO Andrew, I don't know if you can hear. So I had our finance director run three different options, just based off of council compensation, between the $600 that the council is currently receiving up to option three, which would be the ceiling of $1,900. And to your question, Councilmember Lorraine, you'd be looking at a cost increase annually of $95,831. This includes not only the compensation, but also the benefits piece because the council members also receive per's benefit as well. You want to go with other options or you're good with that?
Well, I think my question was really whether that's, whether that could be taken on by, you know, city finances or if that would displace something significant.
As part of the budgetary process, depending on the council direction, we would look to see how we can incorporate that amount into our new year budget or half a year, actually, because it wouldn't go into effect, well, about seven months of budget because it started in December of 2024.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So far, yeah.
Okay. Well, I wanted to start with the question that I think Councilmember Lorraine raised that had been brought up by Commissioner Patel regarding the new members shall be inducted into office. And so if you don't mind, just returning to that slide again. Wait, thank you. So, so I just wanted to understand if there was a scenario where council members were unwilling to make an appointment for mayor because they chose to interpret this language as needing the full complement of the council, including a vacant seat filled. How would you respond in terms of your interpretation of the charter as it's written?
Right, so I'm, what I mentioned last time, a little over a year ago, was that the council, the charter called for the selection of the mayor at that meeting in December. And I know it was continued and that complied, you know, with the Brown Act and there was a legal path to do it. But what I mentioned before was that the absence of a council member was not a reason to forego selecting a mayor. The app, rather, I should say, the fact that there's a vacancy on the council was not a reason to forego selecting a mayor. And I had stated that last December, a little over a year ago.
Thank you. And just because we're talking about doing city business and following the charter when we have a quorum, I'm, you know, I'm wondering, you know, is there a need to strengthen language about, you know, about our mandate to do city business and follow the charter when there is in fact a quorum of council members? So I, I, you know, I raise this because when, you know, we were in 13 hours of meetings with no mayor for seven days, the refrain that kept on coming up was that we cannot possibly make an appointment without, quote, "the full complement of the council." And so, you know, in the time, years that I've been on council, when we have a quorum, we do city business. And so I'm just wondering, is there another loophole potentially that needs to be closed or strengthened when we are discussing charter amendments and the necessity of having a forum and then following through and doing city business? Or is that also implicit and in fact explicit in our mandate to follow the charter?
No, I don't think there's a need for additional language beyond the kinds of things that we're addressing tonight where it comes to, say, mayoral rotation. Because right now, that's not in the charter at all. It just says, pick somebody. And then the guidelines provide a lot of flexibility and does not require the council to do anything in particular in terms of selecting the next person in the sequence. So I think what we're talking about now is to codify that and to make it more of a ministerial process. But generally speaking, no, I don't think there's a need to add kind of broad language in the charter that says, do what the charter requires. Because I think that's, the charter is self-explanatory. Sometimes it's explicit and says, you know, you, it's directive, the council shall do X, or the city shall proceed in this, in a specified manner. Sometimes it provides flexibility. So it really depends on the charter section. So again, I don't see a need to have broad language that says, follow the charter.
Okay, thank you. My other question was about, you know, kind of dovetailing on the question of board and commission compensation. So when we're considering potentially, you know, the lifting de electoral requirement and then also some form of compensation, am I understanding you correctly that anything above zero for someone who's ineligible to work would, would not be able to receive even a stipend or any amount? Is that accurate?
Well, I think, again, like the way the State of California has framed it is that, you know, a, while salary, you know, would not be provided, you know, a, a small, a stipend, I don't think the statute uses the word small, but a stipend could be provided to those who are eligible or not eligible to work or the, for those individuals, regardless of their immigration status, which I think includes those not eligible to work. The statute has a path for some form of compensation. But I think the tricky part is how much compensation is really, would be authorized under federal law. And I don't think that that's been tested. So I can't say, I think any amount above zero is potentially a concern, but I can't tell you 50 is okay, but $100 is not. I just don't think it's been tested quite yet.
Yes. So I understand and I know that you don't want it to be beholden to a number, but, but for our purposes, you know, where we are weighing risks and we can, you know, to achieve a goal like broadening and expanding the diversity of our boards and commissions, which are actually less diverse than they were five years ago, right? If that's the, you know, the stated goal here in considering this, assuming some degree of risk is, is, is a, you know, is, is a possibility as policymakers and then we can calibrate based on, you know, your advice and guidance, what our risk tolerance would be. So I think if we assume that there is potentially some risk, there are 20-plus cities in the State of California that are navigating in this space while ambiguous, but assuming some level of risk. You know, is that, is there, it sounds like there's potential for more in-depth research to look at how in fact their cities are administering it. Are they, you know, at what pay scale, what commissions are being, you know, are being compensated and, and at what level of compensation and employee status? So, you know, would you say that you, at this point, you feel like you have a strong foundation or a basis in terms of understanding how it is implemented in the cities that it is in fact in place?
So what I would say is, well, first a couple of things. As the city's attorney, my, I'm, you know, I have a fairly low tolerance for risk. That sort of goes with the territory.
That's a good thing.
But I also understand that, you know, the council is weighing policy options and that the legal risk is not the sole basis on which to make policy decisions. I completely get that. As far as giving you, giving the council sort of a full explanation as to how other cities are navigating the state law and looking at their eligibility and compensation, you know, I, there's always room for more. If the council has an interest in further exploring the issue of compensation, either alone or in combination with eligibility, you know, if there's a council majority that wants to direct me into you know, if there's a council majority that wants to direct me to do more research, I can certainly do that. What I'm suggesting to you, though, is the safer legal ground is to really focus only on eligibility and not on compensation. But again, it's up to the council to decide how you would like me to conduct more research and more review.
Thank you. And at this point, you know, if, I guess at this point, you mentioned that we have a reimbursement policy in place. And I'm wondering, you know, if, for example, we wanted to encourage diversification of more caretakers, for example, people who needed childcare or elder care and wanted to look at a expanded reimbursement policy that would allow for reimbursement for those direct costs to service in, on, you know, while attending a meeting, what would the process be for those kinds of changes?
So there is a council reimbursement policy that's embedded in the council guidelines. Oh, I think maybe our city clerk has something to add.
Also embedded in the boards and commission rules and procedures.
There you go. So I think it would require council action because in the charter, there we go. In the charter, this is again, current language, it allows for reimbursement for actual necessary expenses, but it has to be authorized by the city council. So I think if the council wanted to change the expense reimbursement policy, it would require a change to those guidelines for boards and commissions, likely in the form of perhaps a council resolution. We'd have to like look at the mechanism to do it, but regardless, it would be council action. And so it would not require a charter amendment. And then the other thing I'll say is, as far as caregiving, childcare is concerned, I think the question is, is it an actual unnecessary expense incurred in the performance of the duties of, say, a member of a board or commission? So I think for childcare, I think that's less common, my understanding. There may be other cities that authorize childcare as an expense that is connected with the performance of the duties of, say, a planning commissioner or another member of a board or commission. But it would require some more review to see like what other cities do this and, you know, how has it actually worked in practice? And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. And so it sounds like more research would be needed. Would, just, you know, offhand, would your, do your concerns about immigration status hold with a reimbursement practice and policy if we were to change the electoral eligibility requirements?
You know, that's an interesting question for eligibility. You know, I'd need to do some more, some more research like on that question to really give you a firm answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you finished?
And then my last question is, is about the council compensation. And so my, my understanding of a timeline, if it were to be implemented, is that the soonest it could be implemented would be after the next election cycle? Is that, is that right?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
And then would that then apply to all of the seated council members at the same time?
Right. Now, that's, and you know, I quoted the statutory language in the staff report, too. It's, the idea is even if you have staggered terms, it's, you know, after the next municipal election.
So, for example, would there be any, is there any legal concern from your perspective about, maybe going even a step further and potentially drafting an ordinance that would apply after an election so that it would take effect fully when, let's see, during, so you're saying the first, the first party would come, next three seats would become eligible in the next election cycle? So that would be in '26?
No, what I'm saying is that, let's just say the council this summer were to pass an ordinance adjusting the compensation, then it could not go into effect immediately. It could only go into effect after the next municipal election. But it wouldn't be staggered so that it only applies to some council members in November and then the other council members in '26. It would just apply to the full council after the next municipal election.
So currently, that's how the state law is applied, right? I guess what I'm angling at is that is there, is there a reason that the, a legal reason that would prevent the council from staggering it? Because I think that the, you know, there's potential management of optics, right? And a council that, you know, that is, that is opting into a compensation that would more than double our compensation potentially at a time when we're, you know, asking our taxpayers to, you know, to dig into their pockets when there is, you know, rising inflation. And I think, you know, if there is concern or shared concern among my colleagues about managing the optics of a decision like this, would it, you know, would there be a legal pathway to opt into a staggered approach that would, you know, that would protect the three sitting council members who are newly elected, you know, last year from, you know, potentially coming under attack? And instead, if every single council member that, you know, that makes this decision, it wouldn't look like self-dealing, right? It would, it would only come into effect if you are in fact newly elected. Is there a pathway to do that?
So an alternative way to address that concern potentially is to simply have an ordinance apply across the board to all the council members, but not in '24, but in '26. So that it would apply to, you know, all new, it would apply to all council members at the same time. But there's an opportunity for, it wouldn't apply to somebody who was, who had not gone through the electoral process, who had not gone through the process of being elected. So in other words, it wouldn't, well, I think you get what I'm saying. It's, the council members would have gone through the process of running for reelection if they chose to do so.
So you're saying that this council could write an ordinance that would then apply in 2026?
I think that's an unusually long period of time for an ordinance not to go into effect. I don't, sitting here, I can't think of a legal reason not to do it. I think it would be unusual. But if the council was that concerned about sort of the perception of self-dealing, even if it wasn't a legal issue, then that's one potential approach. I would not necessarily recommend an approach where you had differing compensation for different members of the same council. I think that would, that strikes me as perhaps ill-advised. And I think there would be some, some differences, some potential administrative issues with having different compensation for members of the same council. Maybe not ill-advised, maybe just something to reconsider.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. A few questions per sana. One, you mentioned that you were looking at city, when it comes to board member compensation and commission compensation, you were looking at any cities in the county? Did you find any that are compensated?
I found there's a couple. As far as I could tell, one is Foster City. And just talking to them, I think that practice has been in place for some time. I don't have a date, but I think it's just a longstanding practice. And then South San Francisco, I haven't been able to get in touch with yet, but I think they have a fairly low dollar amount they provide compensation for.
Okay. Do you know, is there a number of hours or an amount, so like in the private, in the private sector, if you are a part-time employee, there's no requirement to have, extend health insurance? Is there a certain amount of hours or a certain amount of money if earned, now we then have to extend health insurance?
I'm not aware of any offhand, but, you know, the charter provides for health, retirement, et cetera, to council members. There's a separate charter provision speaking to that issue. So I think that that's why the council receives those benefits. For board and commission members, there is no, well, as indicated, there's no compensation at all, much less a separate section relating to health and retirement benefits.
Sure. A few employers back, there was a concern where I worked, that they had some lower-earning salaried employees. And due to state law, they actually had to increase or actually convert them back to being hourly employees because the number, the amount that they were getting paid as a salaried employee didn't come up to minimum wage. Is there a concern that, so I mean, using us, using the council as an example, if you were making $600 a month, that would mean if you worked on your council job for more than 9.7 hours a week, you wouldn't be making minimum wage. Is there a, is there a concern there that if we're a salaried employee, we should be making, you know, enough that we're, there's not a, I mean, I don't think that any of us have this as an intent. I just know that I've experienced it with an employer in the past. Is that, is that a legal concern that we should be aware of or that we need to be cognitive of?
I think the legal concern is, you know, when you, once you get into the status of being an employee, you need to pay them a minimum wage. Now, I think, you know, council members, you know, are treated like a little bit differently because, you know, you get, your compensation is set under the charter and in compliance with state law.
Right.
So, you know, you don't necessarily have regular, you can spend a good deal of time on preparing for council meetings, on going to council meetings, but it's not like a set schedule.
Right.
That you are obligated to be here and to be working. It's a little bit different. But I think the legal concern is, once you get into the category, the status as an employee, you know, that's where the minimum wage requirement would apply, including our own minimum wage ordinance.
And that could be a concern as well with board members and commissioners because if you were giving them only $150 a month stipend, then clearly, probably the number of hours they're working is not going to be in alignment with minimum wage. So that's why they, you wouldn't want them to be considered employee. You'd want them to be, you'd want it to be considered a stipend as opposed to payment. Is that?
Well, I mean, I think that's the right idea that you, this, a nominal stipend is kind of acts as reimbursement for expenses, I mean, beyond what the charter already requires. It's a, it's a payment for recognition of the service as opposed to, say, a salary. So I think in that way, you, the intent is to avoid any more complicating issues by having the compensation be so great as to making that argument more difficult.
That they're employee or not. Yeah, understood. Can you put up the slide with the different cities' council compensation? Yeah, that's the one. So in this case, is Daly City saying that they're getting paid $2,200 per council member per month? Or is it just that they're getting $1,100, but it's every, you know, split in two?
So this is what I took from their municipal code. And again, when you look at their code, you know, they, I believe instituted their compensation sometime in the mid-'80s and then very frequently adjusted their compensation in accordance with state law, I'm sure, over the years. So that's where you get to this dollar amount that, it's sort of like, you can think of it like a grandfathering N of sorts. It's, they followed a process. And I haven't really spoken to them about this issue, but I think that's how you get there is cities commonly will not adjust compensation very frequently. But if you do, and you adjust it in accordance with state law, you know, the amount can add up fairly quickly.
Yeah, I was just surprised because when I saw this, it said that it hadn't been adjusted since 2006. And so it seemed like they're, you know, well over kind of the median of everyone else. I also had an observation that many of them are making less than $1,000, but not by much. Is there a, do we know if there's any reason why under $1,000 is a magic number? Because there's a 965, a 950, and I think a 955. I think I've got the other slide. But is there a reason or do we know why that's a number that people kind of come to?
I think these are all very localized decisions and there's a number of factors that come into play. So each city makes their own choices and decides whether or not to have compensation on the upper end or on the lower end. So.
Okay. That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick questions for myself. In terms of having it be that the council has to decide on any vacancy or there's a special election held, do I remember from the reading material that San Mateo is the only city that was found that has this current power of the mayor who gets to decide the vacancy?
I believe that's correct. I mean, so Redford City is the only other charter city in San Mateo County. And of course, like San Bruno has an elected mayor. I don't believe there's any other city in San Mateo County that invests this power with the mayor. So at least locally, it's somewhat unusual, but it's been part of the charter for many years. So if the council wanted to stick with that approach and also keeping in mind the proposed language about the mayoral rotation, I mean, the council could choose either one, whether to go with the special election, the special election language, or to retain the power of the mayor to fill a vacancy.
Good. Thank you. And in terms of evaluating youth commissioners, we could make the decision that we would be happy to invite people under 18 at some minimum level, age level, on certain boards and commissions, but not others. Is that correct?
Right. So the language that I suggested in the staff report, I don't actually have on the slide, is essentially board and commission members have to have the same qualifications as council members, except as otherwise provided by the council. And the council could provide otherwise in an ordinance-by-ordinance, commission-by-commission basis. So, you know, we have codified language for our commissioner or various commissions. So in each ordinance, you could specify, okay, what are the qualifications for this particular commission? It would not be, and probably should not be, across the board, although that's, that's a policy determination of the council, too. Like, you could see doing it on a commission-by-commission basis, just looking at what are the duties, the powers and duties of that particular commission, and where is it appropriate to have youth commissioners? Again, this is all predicated on if that language, except as otherwise provided by the council, submitted to voters, then approved by the voters, it would be on a commission-by-commission basis.
Great. Thank you. And one last question. We talked last time about unincorporated San Mateo County residents who get their services from San Mateo. Would it be within the realm of possibility to say that people, I don't know how you do it, whether it's a map or a zip code or whatever, that's not for us to decide, but for people who were San, unincorporated San Mateo County people who were serviced by San Mateo, could we say that they could apply for Parks and Rec, but perhaps not other things? other things?
I think there's, I think that would be possible to specify, and I think that's, that's the way in which the council could specify for a particular, for a particular commission, you brought up the Parks and Rec Commission, that individuals from unincorporated San Mateo could apply if they reside in a certain area, you could, we'd have to see how other cities commonly do it, and learn those lessons that other cities have learned. But having a map, like identifying the boundaries, I think is something, whether that actually gets codified, or is included in the staff report, so as to provide some guidance, like, you could see, I think, having that level of clarity to guide how members of that particular commission could be appointed. I think the thing, the key thing is to be clear, who is eligible.
Right. Okay, great, thanks. Those are all my questions. So I think now it's.
I think we have one other.
Oh, do we? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lorraine.
I appreciate it, apologies. This is one quick question. Could you please remind us the last time the city of San Mateo increased council compensation?
I think it was 2002. There was a charter amendment, it was $300 a month, I think previously, I think it went up to 600 in 2002, but.
It was, yeah, November 2002.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, nothing further.
Thank you. So I think we're ready for public comment.
I have no in-person speaker slips on this item. If you're wanting to speak on this item remotely, please raise your hand now. Through the mayor, I have no public comment on this item.
All right, thank you very much. Then we will close public comment on this item, and return it to council for comments and direction. Who would like to start?
Happy to.
Okay, Councilmember Lorraine. Could you put the questions up? Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Number one, do, I agree with proposed language addressing mayoral rotation, yes, including the council vacancy language proposed. I think they go hand in hand, and I agree with both.
Sorry to interrupt, but also with the first bullet point, since it's part of the same section, there's the council's start time, too.
Oh, yes, I think what's proposed, I can agree with.
Okay.
And I guess maybe to, to make sure I'm specific with regard to, no, yeah, I think, right, the proposed language in the, right now, with regard to vacancies, calls for the special election with 60 days, I, I agree with that. Okay. Recommendations for board and commission and qualifications. I think with regard to broadening our eligibility considerations, I agree with the proposed language for doing that. Given the, some of the discussion that came out of the mayor's question just now, what I like about it is it seems rather elegant, it allows for us to lift some restrictions during this process in which we're considering charter amendments for this restriction and more, but we can, you know, the council can take steps, further steps afterward to refine an ordinance that would make specific changes based on the council's preference with regard to how, you know, it might apply, these, you know, how, you know, customized rules and, and application procedures and interests for the different commissions and boards that we have. If some are not appropriate for people under a certain age, for example, we could make, we could make changes afterward and continue the conversation. So that's, that's where my head is at on that. And then I think with regard to compensation for boards and commissions, I would, I would, I would support asking staff to continue to do some research on how are other cities in California meeting their obligations, and, and finding a way to compensate volunteers who are spending a lot of time on serving the city, without running into potential considerations and concerns that the city attorney has, and see if there, if something can be found, and perhaps brought back to the council for consideration. If we really can't, or if it seems like the risk is too high at that point, then, then I would ask that we consider if there are any other thing we could potentially offer, similar to what Councilmember Lee was mentioning with regard to expanding what could be reimbursed, if at all possible. For council compensation, I would say that I, I guess to cut to the chase, I do feel, I would support increasing it, I would support, I personally feel that it should at least be doubled. So I think I would support, I would support 1,200, I think that's, that is certainly possible. If others are interested in entertaining a higher amount, I would, I would consider supporting it. I'm comfortable with this. When we talk about the aggregated amount this is really costing the city, it's not a tremendous amount, it's not as much as we're asking, you know, to help our stormwater infrastructure get modernized, for example, it's, it's a level below that. And I am understanding that we have not increased it in 20 years. And as, I now have the lived experience of somebody who has spent, you know, multiple weeks of vacation from my other employer to attend council functions, to make myself available for trainings, and, you know, personally, I appreciate the privilege and of being able to do that, but not everybody has that privilege. And so I think taking a step forward in this direction, whether or not it applies to this council, as Councilmember Lee was, was discussing with, with staff, is important to broaden the opportunity for others to run for council in the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on, city clerk, seeing as how it is about seven minutes to seven, well, we need to, I think it might take us a little bit of time to get through all this, so we could be able to do this all by seven.
Thank you. We will put up a slide on the regular meeting, that we're finishing up this meeting, and we'll be there soon.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, who would like to comment next? Councilmember Hedges.
Thank you, Prasanna. Good presentation, I really appreciate it. So does the council agree with the proposed language addressing mayoral rotation? As long as it's ministerial, I'm good with it. Question, though, can we also extend this to the boards and commissions?
Well, for the rotation of the chair, I mean, that's not specified in the charter. That's specified in the board and commission guidelines, so I think that, that's a different conversation, but, you know, the council could visit that at a different time.
So I'll give you two examples where I know people have been passed over political reasons on boards and commissions, and it's created a lot of hurt, and also some resentment. It's just not good. So recommendations for boards and commission compensation qualifications. I would move the, remove the requirement of being elector, but I want the residency to remain. As to compensation, I think it's a good idea to make some compensation for at least some of the boards, at least the ones that take a lot more time, and we know what those are without me saying it. We have a couple of commissions that don't meet more than four times a year, and often don't meet that often. So that wouldn't be a large amount of money. I think I'm okay with the rest of the proposed changes.
And on the question of council vacancies, did you have any view on special election, keeping the current language? Did you have any input on that?
I'm sorry?
So on the question of council vacancies, like how vacancies are filled, right now you have the power of the mayor to fill a vacancy?
Yeah, I agree with that.
You, you want to keep that and not go with the special election? I thought you.
Well, I thought it was special election after 60 days.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay.
Understood.
So I agree with that. And to go a little bit farther with the boards and commissions, I would stand by the feeling that I think if someone has an ITN number, and pays their federal taxes with that ITN number and their state taxes, that we could probably compensate people who are DACA members and Dreamers. So I would be okay with that. As far as council compensation, I don't have a problem with it remaining the same, and I don't have a problem with it being increased. I think it's up to the will of the majority of the council. It's not going to affect me, so I just don't feel comfortable weighing in what might, to what might affect others. So I will go along with the majority of the council on that.
All right, then.
You want to go?
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. I would largely agree with my council colleagues, Lorraine and Hedges. I support the language for the mayoral rotation, the proposed changes for filling the vacancy. And, and I would agree with Councilmember Hedges that I support keeping the residency requirement and removing the, the electoral requirement. I, I agree with Councilmember Lorraine that it, some further research on, on options for how to potentially compensate boards and commissioners, and at what level is, would, you know, would be warranted to have a full picture to make a decision on, and, and so I, I would ask if, you know, if we could look at those 20-plus cities that are doing it, how are they doing it, and, you know, what, what, you know, what can be learned from, from their, their best practices. I also agree with the, you know, removing the specificity of the start time for meetings. And, and overall, I support council compensation increase, and I'm curious to hear what, what my, what the council's wishes are in terms of the amount.
And then, so is that the end of your comment? Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Sure. Let's see. Starting at the beginning, I also support the proposed language you've made for addressing the mayoral rotation. As far as recommendations for board and commission compensation, I, I think I could be persuaded to do a stipend for the boards that are heavily time-consuming. However, I'd want to make sure that, you know, you, you came back to us with more information to be sure that we're not opening up a Pandora's Box of other problems. And if we are, then I would say we leave it as is, especially since we, there are no others, well, there's very few others that are doing that. As far as the council's start time, I appreciate that change. The one thing I would ask is, should we put a footnote saying, you know, because it says thou shalt on the first and third Monday, should we put a footnote saying, you know, because we have a lot of holidays that fall, and we're very regularly not meeting, in fact, this month, we're meeting twice on Tuesday. So I just, I mean, if we're going to change it, we might as well get it, get it right. And if there's some little tweak we could do there, I would recommend we do that.
I think there's, there's some flexibility in the charter already, to where it's a day is inconvenient, to pick a different day, and the council meeting schedule, once it's set, is a mechanism to do that.
Okay. Like I said, it was just, if it, if it makes sense to fix it, fix it. Where was I? I don't think I have any other proposed changes there. As far as council compensation, I, I think I do agree with, I think the majority of my colleagues, that we should increase the council compensation. The, the number to me that I was thinking was approximately $1,000. We saw many of the cities that are smaller than us are at that, that level. I could entertain what Councilmember Lorraine suggested, too, which is 1,002. Again, I think I'd like to hear from everyone who wants to say what they think that should be. And, yeah, I mean, next November's fine, or two years next November is fine. It's, for me, it's, it's more important to fix it for future council members than it is, and I, you know, I just want to say, it doesn't mean a lot to me. If we were doing this job for the money, well, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be up here, probably. I don't think I have anything else. Did I miss any? Any of the questions I didn't answer?
I think there was the vacancy question, I think, based on what you said previously. Are you, are you okay with the languages proposed?
Yeah, I'm okay with the language as proposed. Oh, I think I did residency requirement, I would want someone to still be a San Mateo resident, and I think if, if they're a San Mateo resident, I could be, I'm, I'm on the same agreement with everyone on that. Thank you. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. All right, so for me, I support the, the language addressing the mayoral rotation and calling a special election to fill the vacancy. Are any vacancies in terms of boards and commissions, dropping the elector, fine, keeping the residency requirement, absolutely. I would like to be able to include, as you suggested, having a map of people who are in unincorporated San Mateo County but are being serviced by San Mateo County, to at least be able to apply for, for parks and rec, because that is a service that they use. We did not talk at all about what the minimum age was. Has that been decided somewhere else? What, what the minimum age for youth is?
I wouldn't say it's necessarily been decided somewhere else. I mean, for the youth members of the, of the Park and Rec Commission, I have to quickly double-check, like, have we specified, like, an age?
Because I know some of the cities specify.
It's 13 to 17.
I'm sorry, what?
For youth commissioners to the Park and Recreation Commission, they must be between the age of 13 and 17 at the time of appointment.
See, I have a real problem with putting someone who's 13 years old on the planning commission. I, I would, I would just say that for, certainly for the personnel and the planning commission, there should not be youth commissioners. I just think there's too much complexity in the planning commission and personnel, for all the reasons you talked about. I also question whether the senior citizens commission, whether that would be an appropriate place for them as well. We definitely want more diversity, but there's a question there in my mind. I was thinking more 16, but open to, you know, comment from my fellow council members, I just want it to be valuable input, and not just input.
And I'll just add, you can specify sort of by commission as well, so maybe.
That might be the best way to do it, just to go through at a future time and figure out by commission. Then, let's see. Then in terms of compensation, I was also thinking about $1,000, and I'm, I don't see any problem with having it go in for everyone after the next election, because if we're going to get blowback for this, we're going to get blowback if we raise it $1. And I think it absolutely makes sense, if there has not been a raise in 20 years, to raise it. But between $1,000 and $1,200, I am, I am comfortable. I'm not comfortable in non-staggered, or in staggered compensation, I think, for all the, it's just very complicated. And then let's see, is there anything else you need my feedback on? Oh, in terms of compensation for commissions, I tend to just say this is going to get, for the amount of money we're going to be able to spend, it's going to get really complicated really fast, so I would tend not to, but since the majority of the council members want to do some more research, I'm happy with doing that, and coming back and having a more robust discussion. I guess, is there any complication with that, and charter amendments, and what you need for the election? Or is this off the table, and it doesn't really matter?
You mean, in terms of having a further discussion on this question?
Yeah.
Well, no, in the, in the proposed schedule, you know, I had, I had built in the possibility of another meeting in February. of another meeting in February to talk about charter amendments. I think we had February 20th on a, as a potential study session date, so, no, I don't think it presents a problem in terms of the process of going through.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, then, I think you've got all you need from this.
Yes.
And do you, yeah, hold on. Does somebody want to say something?
I'll wait for councilmember Hedges, but I want to make sure we get clarity on council compensation because I didn't hear a majority here on, relying on a member.
Okay, let's.
So I think that the mayor brought up something that's sort of important on the age. I would only settle on the age if we're, anything below that is a violation of child labor laws. I don't think we need to have someone, especially if we're going to pay compensation, that's under that age. And I believe it in most cases. There are some exceptions, but in most cases, it's 16. And quite frankly, there's a new rise in this country, especially with immigrant children of using them in very dangerous jobs, even in the industries that we represent.
So I think we're still looking for, you're looking for feedback on compensation.
I'm, I'm looking for consensus. So I have councilmember Lorraine who said 1,200. I have councilman, or deputy mayor Newsom, who said 1,000 or 1,200, and then the mayor at 1,000. And then we had councilmember Hedges and councilmember Lee saying whatever the majority of the council wishes.
1,000. I'll make it easy so we have three. I'll do 1,000.
Anything you want to add, councilmember Lee? No? Okay, so I think we have it at 1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Do you have everything you need for right now?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So on we go. I think that, okay, so I think we are done with the study session. Is there anything else?
We could adjourn this meeting. We'll need about 10 minutes to stand up the next one.
Okay, great. So we will adjourn for 10 minutes. Thank you, everyone.